Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to Spokane City Council briefing session for August 22nd. Ms. Fister, if you'd please call the roll.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Perkins, take away the August 29th advance agenda.
Thank you, Council President Beggs, members of the city council. This is the advanced briefing agenda for Monday, August 29, 2022. Consent agenda, items one and two. Item one is a contract renewal with Rubicon Global for solid waste collection management and telematic system. Item two is a contract extension with Asset Works for annual maintenance support of the city's fleet asset management system. Our presenter, our interim director of IT department, Mr. Mike Sloan.
Thanks, sir. Good afternoon, Council President, council members. Item one is the renewals, contract two of two. It's our annual contract for Rubicon in the amount of $189, $192.11, and that's a slight increase from the previous year of $179, 936, and that's due to the expansion of additional tablets that the division uses for this product. So the increase is nominal, but it's based on increased usage. So requesting your approval for that second year of the contract. Any questions? Then item number two, again, is a contract extension with Asset Works in the amount of $101, 433.69. This is, again, an annual maintenance cost, and it is an increase from the previous year of $95,006.92, and that's, again, increase part of their annual contractual increase that we tried to negotiate and tried to say under that 2.9 lid. Again, I give you both of those numbers just to represent our efforts to maintain these annual cost increases, although they're established contractually. We try to extend a multi-year contract to keep those costs limited. So any questions on those two? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Item three on the consent agenda for Monday, April, April, August 29, purchase of property casualty terrorism and cyber insurance from Willis Towers Watson Insurance. Our presenter is our city attorney, also currently serving as our risk management director, manager, Mr. Mike Ormsby.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins and members of the council. So we talked about this at the committee meeting last week, and I'm back. It'll be on the agenda next week for adoption. This, as we had indicated to you earlier, is a pretty volatile market, and I talked with the broker again today, and seven of the categories of insurance of the nine listed here, we have different premiums as of today, and we're going to hope to firm them up tomorrow. The good news is, five of those seven areas, the premium actually went down, and in a couple of areas, our property, general property coverage, and the next level treatment plant, they went down significantly. Unfortunately, the two areas where it did go up, terrorism insurance and public liability, in the public liability section, they're going to go up yet again because one of the five carriers that we have to provide us the $20 million in insurance pulled out of the market at the last minute, and so we had to shop the insurance around over the weekend, and we're going to pay another $250,000 to have the liability coverage. Again, a lot of this relates to, as we've laid out before, the state of Washington, for both public entities and liability insurance in general, is not a favorable market in terms of how the markets look at things. So I'm pleased that the broker was able to get us insurance. There are some real good news items I just wanted to mention to you, though, in terms of the story, and actually some good things. The utilities folks spent a fair amount of time educating our underwriting, the underwriters staff that deal with the waste treatment plant, the next level treatment plant, and the upriver dam, and so the waste energy proposal stayed the same, and a lot of the problems there have to do with supply chain issues that we've not been able to do the repair to the plant. But both the upriver dam and the next level treatment plant both saw reductions in their premiums, and I think in part, that's because of the education that was done by our people. I would say with, and does Mike still here? No, Mike left. I probably shouldn't say anything nice about Mike since he's not here, but one of the, one of the good areas that we had was in cyber. We weren't sure we were going to be able to get cyber insurance, and we did get it at a 25% premium increase, but we also got an increase in the coverage for some of the business interruption insurance we have because of the securities that we, the security we have in place on the credit card intake on those, and then we also got the deductible and a couple of our other lines of cyber insurance reduced. So we have the same level of coverage, but it kicks in at a, at a lower loss amount. So those are both really good news items. We, I will firm these numbers up with our broker tomorrow. I'll share them with Councilwoman Wilkerson as the chair of the Finance and Administration Committee. Then we will get that information to you on the council, and then we'll do a substitute with the city clerk for the agenda next week, and these should be our final premium amounts that we're able to get to you this week. Be happy to answer any questions or speak to any concerns that any council member may have.
I just wanted to thank you, Mike, for continuing to do this work for us with your expertise. It's really helpful. It leaves me feeling very confident, so thank you.
Thank you. It's been fun most of the time.
Thank you, Mr. Ormsby, and nice to see you again. Item four on the consent agenda for Monday, August 29, report of the mayor pending claims and payments of previously approved obligation, including those of Parks and Library. 4B, report of the mayor pending payroll claims of previously approved obligations. And item five, city council meeting minutes, both 4A and B, and item five will be completed with their appropriate information for the Monday, August 29 council discussion. Under special budget ordinances, American Rescue Plan Fund, this arises from the interest to provide appropriation for Parks Playground Equipment, and our presenter from our finance department is Michelle Murray.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, council members. This is basically just a house cleaning item. So last year in June of '21, ARPA, you guys selected allocate $160,000 to ARPA, of ARPA funds to the Park Department for Playground Equipment. This was before we kind of got our reporting structure in place and got the things tightened down on the funds, and the money had actually just been transferred out of the ARPA fund into the Parks Cumulative Fund. So with that, it left me not able to control and report on the funds, so I actually moved the money back to the ARPA fund, so it's back now in 1425, and this is just a house cleaning item, giving them allocation to spend that money. So it's the original one from last year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next item under resolutions, declaring the intention of the city council to change or establish certain assessment rates within the East Bragg Parking and Business Improvement Area. Our presenter, Amanda Beck.
Good afternoon, council. This resolution will be setting the public hearing for September 18th, which will be the final hearing that will adjust the minimum and maximum assessment rates for the East Bragg bid.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. And finally, our last advanced briefing agenda item under resolutions is approving settlement of Tina Lee versus City of Spokane. And our city attorney, Risk Management, all right, sir. You'll always be the city attorney to me, Ms. Ormsby.
Thanks. We briefed this at the committee meeting last week, and this is the case that was up on Hamilton, Nevada, at the very beginning of the project, the Trent Bridgeside, where the amount of special damages in this case was $120,000. We had an uninsured motorist that probably was the primary cause of the accident, but since they're uninsured, the city is basically stuck with, with resolving the claim, which we were able to do in mediation with a good mediator for the payment of $80,000, and we would continue to recommend that the council approve this resolution so that we can resolve this case and, and get it off our books. Happy to answer any questions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Council President, believe it or not, that I believe concludes the advanced briefing agenda for August 29.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for August 29?
So moved. Second.
I suppose moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that agenda is approved, and we don't have any additional briefing for tonight's agenda, but I've had some requests for some changes, and the first is on page six, ordinance C36234. It's an SBO on the training facility, and I think Councilmember Kinnear.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to defer this for a month, and if I can get a second, then we can talk about it.
Second.
If I might.
Yes, the September 26th.
Yes. So this is to install new carpet and improve the training center firing range, and we have been in discussions with our legislators. It seems that we could be, very likely, I shall say, getting more money than just this from the state, and that means that it would be remodeled, it would be expanded, new classrooms. So this would be, if we did this now, then we'd be spending this money, but it would then have to be redone, torn up. It's good money after bad, in other words. So I'm proposing to just defer this for a month so that we can have the conversation with our legislators, so we can get some firm commitments before we actually go through with this.
And then these funds would be reallocated to training?
And then these funds would be reallocated to training and to pay for our overtime, I believe.
Yeah, it would pay, it would reimburse our payroll account, which is $3 million in the hole currently, so.
So that is the ask from, from me.
Do we know if chief, I mean, where's the, where's the chief at on this? Do we know?
I, I spoke with him, and he would like to use the funds as proposed there.
Can you clarify, what did you?
They would like to update the stuff now.
Oh, okay. But do they want the, the bigger update, the more regional center? Do they like that idea?
They also want that, too.
Okay, okay.
They just want carpet and stuff now, is what they said. That gets bad.
So I don't think one month is a big deal to just wait and then get more of a commitment, and then we can talk to them about, maybe we do something a little bit smaller right now so that it's not such a mess. So if they have something that's a little more concrete.
So, I was just going to say, when Councilmember Oppone and I was out there, they really did have a list of ask of upgrades that they wanted. They thought these, the carpet was the most imminent that they needed to get done, but I agree, 30 days should not make that significant of a difference if there's potential opportunity to not only get this accomplished, but others on the list, and we will know that in 30 days.
Yeah, I'm, I'm about getting state money for this. I think that's fine. I do have a question as to how long they would then have to wait to get that done if, you know, we have to wait for it to go through session and everything like that. Like, what's the timeline on that?
That's something that we have to ask our, so if, if it's something that we're going to have to wait too long for, then we go ahead, but I think we need more information before we, we go ahead with this. I would feel better about, let's get more information.
And, and so as you were talking about, maybe if it does go through the state session and, you know, they understand, you know, the waiting is going to potentially get the more, you mentioned something about some smaller stuff, would that just be, you know, the most pressing of the needs at that facility, like the carpet and some of the other things that they mentioned?
I would think so.
All those in favor of deferring until September 26 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right, so that passes six to one. And going to page eight, ordinance C36259, collective bargaining. I think Councilmember Kinnear, you also had a request on that.
I'd like to defer that for two months. I spoke with the president of Local 29, and there's some things that he indicated, both 270, Local 29, and the guild wanted to have conversations with council about other things that should be in this that we were missing. And I thought, yeah, two, two months, okay, let's, let's give them some airtime so that we don't do something or pass something that has consequences that down the road are going to be not good for both us and our bargaining units.
That be October 24th? Is that the date?
Sure.
Is that a motion to defer till October 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
I just have a quick discussion item here. I'm, I'm curious to know why we were originally doing it as an emergency, if it's an emergency, that feels like something we need to address now as opposed to something that we're putting off, and if it's something that should be put off, then maybe it shouldn't be an emergency ordinance, and maybe we should change that.
Agreed. That's a point.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I, I spoke to the presidents of the unions as well, and, you know, they, they voiced a number of concerns, and so I agree that it should be, should be put off for, you know, potentially scrapped altogether if it's something that, that's no good. So if that's something that, that is found out through the, through the unions and everything like that, I'd be curious to know where we're at if it's just no good.
I, yeah, I anticipate after the conversations that there would be changes to it, and then that language on emergency could be looked at. This was originally filed in response to us not getting an information about a TA ahead of time. That contract has since then, so this was filed before that contract was finalized.
Right.
So there was a little more urgent at the time, but that is, we're now past that, so.
But the purpose of doing this as an emergency was that to get it into code before we go into any other negotiating?
Yeah, and there's, almost all the contracts are now done for the moment.
Right, but, and I'm curious again, because the idea was that before, you know, potentially negotiating a new contract where we wanted some significant changes, and so is this deferral going to keep us from being able to do that?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
And just the other piece of this was to have a conversation with the ombudsman's office and commission and public feedback, and I believe the understanding we have is that there'll be a note in the bargaining agreement, ground rules to allow that feedback to be used, and that, I believe that meeting is going to be in October, because they don't usually meet in September, because they have the national conference in September, and I think negotiations, if they haven't already started with the police guild, are starting, and, but our lawyers, my understanding from him is that this is fine, so.
So just a procedural question here. If we defer this for two months right here, is it still going to be considered an emergency ordinance at the time, or can we move it from an emergency ordinance to the?
That's what I meant, is that could be amended. So emergency ordinance is just the language that's in there?
Okay.
So that could be stripped out by amendment if that's for votes.
Can I just clarify? We do have a session with the police guild tomorrow, so I just wanted to be very upfront with this council. The negotiating team for administration is starting discussions with the police guild on the new contract passed this year tomorrow. Now, we are committed to making sure that before there's any tentative agreement, you all see what those terms and conditions are, and this is just a meeting tomorrow to get things set up, hear from the guild, and kind of establish what the process will be as we go forward. So no hard decisions will be made tomorrow, but I at least want to let you know we are meeting with them tomorrow, so you understood that.
And does that include not telling guild members that the city council has approved something, or that we have talked about this, and we're not going to have any more of that talk, right?
Well, I, I could speak for the administration and the bargaining team, and myself, we have not had any conversations with the guild on, on that topic, per se.
I think she was asking for future assurances.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would just hope that we don't have that happen again.
We, we won't, Councilmember Stratton, that the, we, we heard the policy direction clearly from the council as relates to information regarding tentative agreements going forward, and we are going to adhere to that policy advice, not advice, but direction that you clearly gave us.
But the, and the other thing, the assurance that I got from our lawyer was that they would not commit to a, there's a memo they commit to early in the negotiations that are the only things that can be negotiated to. They won't commit to anything that prevents the public feedback that's coming. They're, they're, that's that side note that they have, that we won't hear back, oh, too late, we've done our memo. So that's.
Yeah. Well, I, I appreciate that. I think we all, you know, understand that the, that the people pretty clearly wanted an ombudsman, and so I'm glad that that'll be part of our negotiations.
Yeah. Any other discussion on deferring this until October 24th? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred until 24th.
Council President?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the amended language on C36193 and return that back to the original version.
Which one's that?
So your, your language is to amend it. It's not reconsider because you weren't part of the?
I, I was on the affirmative.
Were you? Were you? Oh, okay. Great, I didn't recall that. Okay, so let me get to that. So that's on page seven and eight, and so your motion is to undo the amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Second. Okay. Any discussion?
Can you?
So I'll, yeah, I'll, so the original, original SBO was for $40,000 for drug buys and criminal informants, and $25,000 for youth drug education, and $10,000 for training, and it was for $75,000 total instead of $175,000 total.
So, so the proposal would bring it down, the youth prevention to 25,000 from 125, right?
To meet the request of the chief.
Yeah. Councilmember Kinnear.
Can you talk a little bit about what the intent is, because it's not to spend the money right away, but to park it?
Yeah. So, yeah, so the, there's twofold purpose to the amendment that we passed earlier. One was to match the money that we're spending on drug dealers with youth education, because some of us thought that that's a more effective way to deter drug crime, and that's a better use of some of the funds, but not to interfere with the, the money that the department wants to use for drug buys and police informants. But this is not, this says that it needs to be used for that purpose, but it doesn't set out who gets the money. That would be, it would just be parked, that 125,000 would be parked until the administration and council agreed on how to do that. I've heard conflicting positions from the administration. One was they don't want to have, to have the administrative burden of administering it, and then the other was they do want to be involved in it, and so we would need to figure that out. But essentially, that money would just go off to the side, and so it wouldn't be used for something other than youth drug education, but it wouldn't be spent anytime soon until we figured out that, and then also some of our longer-term negotiations with the department of how much to spend on youth education versus how much to spend on other things. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I would just, so just in talking with Chief Mydell, I mean, I think the, the additional amounts for the, the education piece is something I know they, they want to pursue. They're not prepared to do so yet, and certainly the foreclosure fund is, forfeiture fund, excuse me, forfeiture fund is, is, doesn't have a, an unlimited supply of money in it. So I think this makes more sense, go back to 25. I would support, frankly, doing another 100 out of ARPA or some other source to, to do this education piece because I think it's important, but I want to respect the way the law is currently written, which says the chief gets to decide in terms of the forfeiture dollars, and I also want to make sure that we're acknowledging just that there are limited funds in there, and so I think there's another way we can do this, but I just think right now this is the, the best way to, to respect the chief's, the, the will of the department.
So do you know how many funds, how much funds are there? Do you know what the amount is?
They sent us, I don't have it in front of me, but they did send us a memo, I think, last week with the, the totals. It's a few hundred thousand dollars.
It's more than a few.
400, I think, is what I saw.
Yeah.
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 So, okay.
You know, also, just to be clear, what the law says is that the City Council and the Chief decide what the purpose it can be spent on, but it is silent as to the amounts. And that's typically what Council comes up with, is the amounts, is my perspective. Just a different one than yours, but that's just, yeah.
So I'll speak to the training, because we've been talking about youth intervention programs. I remember the first year we came on, talking about youth intervention programs, and the police had said, you know, they had the PALS program, and Councilmember Cathcart talked about DARE, but they really hadn't put, in my opinion, an effort into what other programming was out there for youth interventions? And that was just challenging, because it seems it's a perennial statement, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna. So I would be very comfortable in parking the money. Maybe that'll give an impetus to really pursue other options. And to look at some additional community partnerships of groups that are out there running those intervention programs already that we know exists, but I don't see any connection with our law enforcement.
Councilmember Ringel.
Yeah, and like everybody else, we think the youth programs are great. I think that's fantastic. I think it's a good thing to be helping children understand the, the real dangers of, of drugs and what they do to a person. And I just think it's so important right now that we're not taking money away from the ability to get drugs off the streets. And these forfeiture dollars allow us to do confidential buys to get, to get drugs off the streets. You know, recently, I mean, we've, we've had tens of thousands of fentanyl pills taken off the streets. Fentanyl is absolutely ravaging the community and young people. We're talking about pills that are looking like Skittles, that is, are so cheap that people can get, you know, from an allowance in middle school. And so while I, I understand what we're trying to do here is to, to invest in children and help them to understand that drugs are bad, and we should be investing in those. And I agree with Councilman Cathcart's suggestion that we take those monies from ARPA or somewhere else, because it's important, it's really important to understand how dangerous fentanyl is. And I know that we all understand that fentanyl is dangerous, but just a quick demonstration I saw that I want to share with everybody, okay? There's a sugar packet right here, okay? This is one gram of sugar. Two milligrams of fentanyl can kill, okay? Two milligrams. So that amount of fentanyl right there can kill 500 people. That's how dangerous fentanyl is, and that's what's in our community, and those are the things that we're dealing with. And I don't think it's smart to be taking money away from our ability to identify dealers, to identify people who are distributing this incredibly damaging drug on the streets. If we want to invest in youth programs, fantastic. I'm totally on board. I'd support any way that we're doing it. But these dollars right here are specifically intended to help us get drugs off the streets. And I think now is the wrong time to be taking money out of this, when it's just so deadly and something that we're dealing with in our community.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I like the sugar demonstration.
Thank you.
Are you going to be cleaning that up, then?
I, I specifically dumped it on this paper so that I would have an easy cleanup, yeah.
So we all agree.
Yeah.
And I think we have to have a conversation with the Police Department on what is, what is a good path forward? Because clearly, we're not making a difference on the war on drugs. It is getting worse. So we keep pushing more money, more drug buys, getting it off the streets, but every bit we get off the street, there's somebody else that's ready to shove it back on the street. So there, there has to be a demand, or there isn't going to be a supply. That's the way it works. Let's cut off the demand. Best way to do that is educate people. You don't want to take this, it's going to kill you. So our overdose deaths, I talked to Chief Mydl, since 2014 have gone up 600%, 600%. They've been doing drug buys all that time, but yet it's going up. So we need to do something different. In addition to drug buys, we need to do something differently. Because what we're doing right now, just with drug buys, is not working.
And the tough thing is, that's a bit of an unfalsifiable thesis, because the things that we've also been dealing with are massive changes in state laws when it comes to drugs, right? And so.
That is the last two years, not since 2014.
But that's included in the last six years, right? That's included in that.
Since 2014.
Right. I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I get the point, that we're trying to eliminate the demand through education. I get that. The trouble is that the, the demand is here now, and we need to get the people supplying to those people off the streets. We need to eliminate their ability to deal by identifying and arresting them.
Yes, and we're doing that, it's just not enough.
I agree, so we shouldn't take $100,000 extra out of this. We should be putting that more towards drug buys.
And not towards education. I think we could go on like this.
No, I, we can do both, but this money right here should be used for the drug buys that we can allocate other money for.
We're not rolling in dough, just saying.
All right, I agree. Sorry.
And Councilmembers of the House?
All right. I would actually argue that the at-risk dollars, or the, spending money on youth at risk is actively taking it out of the system. I just did a ride-along this weekend, Saturday night. The number of 14 and 15-year-olds that are out and about on a Saturday night actively dealing drugs is real. So if we get activities and funding to direct it towards those, the police say they're recruiting at STA Plaza, they're recruiting in the schools, and those kids are then actively involved in gangs and drug dealing. And so if we spend this money on them, it's actively reducing the drugs in our community. So I think there's a direct connection to the forfeiture fund in this case.
Councilmember Ringel.
For sure. And, you know, I mean, I, I understand what everybody's saying. Again, I'm not saying we don't invest in, in youth programs. I think that's a fantastic idea. But as we're talking about people who, you know, we're riding along with the police and we're seeing these things, the police are the ones who are suggesting this is the best way for us to combat drug problems. This is the best way. And so I'm not saying that we shouldn't invest in those programs. I think we should. But this, right here specifically, what they're asking for us is, from their perspective, the people who are dealing with it day in and day out, from their perspective, this is the best way that we can fight it. And so I don't understand why we're.
Quick comment? Councilmember Wilkerson, and then Councilmember Cathcart, and then I have a comment, too. Go ahead.
So as the same analogy where we could just put $25,000 into education and come back and backfill, can we not use that same analogy with the funds for undercover? Take this money, get it out there, and as the need arise, that they come back and say, "Council, we need more money for undercover drug busts." Because at that point, we will at least have deployed some resources out into the community instead of us kind of at a stalemate. So I think at this point, whatever they get in hand would be useful, and then we would see it before us again.
Councilmember, I said Cathcart, and then Stratton. Go ahead.
Yeah. Well, it was mentioned that, that we're seeing a lot of, you know, dealing in schools. And I think that, you know, another thing, and this is very out of the box, but I'd be very supportive of is, to the extent possible, using funding to help put resource officers back in those schools, to identify, you know, those who are dealing and pushing this crap, and, and stop it. You know, I think it's absolutely wrong what's happening. But, but again, this doesn't prevent or stop us from pursuing an education program, something similar to DARE or otherwise. It, we can absolutely do that. We can, we can pass a resolution today, as a matter of fact, tomorrow, to use $100,000 of ARPA funds to do this. The issue at hand, I think, is the Chief has asked us not to spend down their very limited resource in forfeiture dollars. And, and I have some concerns, much of it national, some of it state, in terms of how forfeiture dollars are obtained and all of that. I'd love to see some reforms there. But the fact is, we have these dollars in place. It's a very limited amount that the police can use for buys. I have a, I'm, I doubt very much that we are going to allocate ARPA or even general fund dollars towards additional CI funds. And so this is the fund where it's going to come out of. And they have told us, Major McNabb has said repeatedly via email, I can show you the emails, that they have asked year after year for far more than what's in here, and they've been routinely denied. And they need probably closer to 80 to 120,000 a year in the CI funds. But we will never allocate that to them. And so they're, they're always under-resourced in that department. So, you know, probably be an easier conversation if we were giving them the resources they were asking for in terms of spending down in other areas.
Councilmember Stratton.
So I would just contribute this, that if there's a way, maybe it's smart to defer this and wait and set something up with police, set something up with the Chief or any of the drug officers. It seems that we get caught up in, you know, somebody tells somebody something and then doesn't share that information, or we're not getting to as many Councilmembers. But if this is such a huge issue, which I believe that it is, and I agree with everybody up here, then I think it calls for maybe a study session that's dedicated between Council, the Chief, the drug officers, so that we have an understanding of it, and that we stop this bone tree of information that really needs to come to all of us at once as a group with data, with information, so we can make the best decision possible. I mean, it just, it, I just think that makes more sense than doing this. I, I would defer it.
So, so the motion right now is whether to change the language, and then we could, depending on that, we could get to that motion. I'm, I'm just going to add two things. I, it seems like there's a, a false dichotomy. This is not a spend it on education or spend it on confidential informants and drug buys. This is a both. I have been trying, but we gave $80,000 at the beginning of the year. Police said they needed another 40 for 120,000, which is their target. I've been trying to vote to give them that extra $40,000 for several months now, and I want to. We have given them, if, once we've done that, we will have given them everything that they have asked for this year for drug buys and confidential informants. And if they need more, they can come back more. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars in the account, so this is not taking $1 away from confidential informants or drug buys. They have a couple of years' worth in the account that are ready. It just adds the education piece, and then if we're, to Councilmember Kinnear's point, we can start doing that and see how that works, then we can see. But there's plenty of money in the account currently for everything that they've asked for to date, and for this youth education piece, which, which is a part of it. So it's not an either-or. We're not taking $1 away from it. They will continue to get more money every, they continue to seize community members' property under the law. So I don't, I don't really see it as a crisis. So I, I think we should go ahead and park the money, as you might know, since I proposed that amendment before, so. But we will, so we're going to have a vote. So the vote, just so you know, a yes vote is roll it back to the $100,000 less total, which will be taken out of the youth education. And a no vote would be to leave it the way it is currently.
Mm-hmm.
So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, two ayes. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, and any abstentions? All right. So it stays the way it is, it'll be on the agenda for tonight. But, yeah.
So I want to make a motion.
Okay, yes, you can go ahead and make your motion.
To defer this for, I don't know, a month? And instruct Council or SPD, however that's going to work, to set up a hour and a half, two-hour study session and talk about these issues and get them the information. We are all hearing the same thing. That makes total sense to me. I think I'd feel better knowing that we all heard the same, same voices and we're getting the same data and information. Because I know, now I have more questions than I did before we started this conversation.
Okay, so your motion is to defer till September 26th?
Sure.
And you seconded it? I, my only thing I want to ask Mr. Perkins, I don't know if anyone, or Mr. Smithson. In the past, we have been sort of accused of putting this off and not acting promptly on it. I want to make sure that the administration wants, or I want to hear whether they agree that it should be delayed for a month, or we should vote tonight, so. I don't know. Someone wants to?
Good afternoon, Council. I don't think I'm going to be much help. I have not had this conversation with the Chief. I don't know if this is an imminent, they need the 40,000 right away. I don't know if they have some, some plans for it right away, so I, I'm not a whole bunch of help, so I apologize for that. But, and I get where, I get your point, that if it is that they have something in the pike, in the, in the plans, and they want to get it right now, then I would think that they would probably prefer that it's voted on tonight, but I can't, I can't speak to that one way or the other.
Does anybody want to let them know they should?
So the Chief will be here this evening to address this item, so I will let him speak to it. I believe he will say that they want the, they would, they need the 40,000 now, but I would defer to his Chief, because he will be here this evening to address this point specifically.
I believe all the SPD leadership are in training today, so that's why none of them are here today.
We could, just as a suggestion, we could, you could renew your motion to defer tonight after we heard from the Chief, if you wanted to do that.
Sure, I just think we need the information before we.
Okay.
It's serious money and serious issue.
Councilmember Kinnear?
No, nothing. Fine.
I, I just have a question. So if we were to approve the money as is the 125,000, it won't be spent right away anyway. So in that case, we could still get that information in the next month while they haven't spent the money, and we could go back and change it if needed after hearing more information.
That, and that might work, yeah.
So then we could approve it today, still have it on study session, and if needed, amend it later.
I just really think when these issues come up, and they are so important, that there needs to be some kind of effort to bring us all together with police leadership and to sit down and have that discussion collectively as a group, so that we know what we're all, because we all want the same thing, we just need to understand it.
All right, so you have a motion pending to defer. Are you, are you going to withdraw that for now and do it later?
I'll withdraw, and we'll see what happens tonight.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you on that. And then I had one request, I can't make a motion, but on ordinance C-36239, essential city facilities. I circulated late this afternoon some change, substitution based on the impact, feedback from City Legal, Utilities Department, and Councilmember Kinnear. I did it after 1:00 PM, and so it would take a suspension of the rules to consider substituting it. I thought I had a good excuse, that I was talking with the mayor, Mr. Perkins, and Mr. Smithson about it. While at the time, I would have been sending that out, but it's still outside the rules. So I'm wondering if there's a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on suspending the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Two nays, five ayes, the rules are suspended. Is there a motion to substitute the version that was circulated? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of substituting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Two nays? Any abstentions? All right, five to two, it is substituted. And I think that is all we have, except, oh, yeah.
I would actually like to make a motion to make public the memos and legal analysis that we've received from our city attorney regarding this ordinance.
Second.
Okay.
Isn't it already public?
It's confidential.
Oh, right.
So I'm just, I'm not opposed to debating it, but I would love to have some legal advice about what that means. Often when you waive on something, you're waiving it way bigger. And we do have an executive session scheduled for this afternoon to talk about potential litigation, and we can add to that legal advice. Well, this would be about potential litigation as well, so we can add that to the.
Okay.
To it. So, so can I technically get you to withdraw that motion, just, just for now?
Yeah, I will withdraw.
You can renew it later. All right, so we are going to go into executive session. I'm going to say for 20 minutes, so 4:40 by my watch, and we're going to talk about potential litigation, actual and potential litigation. Potential. All right. And for those of you who are listening, we will come back at 4:40 and either announce that the study session is adjourned or will extend. I usually say I don't anticipate further action, but there could be further action, so.
I wish I could remember the process.
We're good? All right, this is Spokane City Council President Bream Beggs announcing that we have finished our executive session. And briefing session is adjourned. We'll see you folks at 6:00 p.m.